All right, good evening and thank you for viewing the September 4th meeting of the Arcata City Council. So this meeting is being showed on YouTube and you can also zoom in. And we will start with our land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialisms. And if you would like me, please join me for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stillman.
President.
Councilmember Shaffer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
All present.
Okay, that will take us to ceremonial matters. First, we have a proclamation recognizing September 21st, 2024, as the International Day of Peace. And this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Shaffer.
Recognizing September 21st, 2024, as the International Day of Peace. Whereas, the International Day of Peace was established by the United Nations in 1981 as an annual observance with September 21st set as a day of nonviolence and ceasefire in 2001. The theme for 2024 is cultivating a culture of peace. And whereas conflicts around the globe are killing and/or threatening millions of people directly and due to food scarcity, lack of clean water and medicine, and disease, damaging environments and infrastructure, and adding to the climate crisis. And whereas lasting peace requires protection of human rights of all people, social justice, and development, economic justice, equity in healthcare and services, environmental justice, and climate action are all critical parts of the peace process. And whereas the International Day of Peace is a time to lay down weapons and observe ceasefires, and now must also be a time for people to see each other's humanity for all of our survival. The United Nations invites all governments, nations, and communities to end conflicts and instead promote peace and harmony through actions supporting sustainable development, human rights for all, and peaceful solutions for conflicts. We can strengthen the culture of peace by seeking to understand ourselves and others, particularly people of different cultures, countries, and religions, and celebrating our differences to make the world an interconnected, peaceful, and healthy place, which history has shown can be done. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes September 21st, 2024, as International Day of Peace, and encourages the community to work together to end racism, religious conflicts, and war, and create lasting peace for all, locally and globally. We also express our commitment to the full exercise and enjoyment of rights for migrants in the sanctuary city, respecting diversity, and promoting equity among all residents. Dated September 4th, 2024, and signed by Meredith Matthews, Mayor. And we have Carol Woods here to accept this proclamation.
Thank you. I'm used to watching you guys on TV except to be here. But I really appreciate the proclamation. I'm Carol Woods, member of Humboldt Branch of Women's International League for Peace and Freedom. And I want to accept this proclamation in hopes that recognizing the International Day of Peace may encourage people to continue to hope that peace is possible, and to do what each of us can do to work for that end. So thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a proclamation in recognition of Coastal Cleanup Month, which is September 2024. And this proclamation will be read by Vice Mayor Stillman.
Thank you. Whereas the state of California has a varied coastline of sandy beaches, rocky shores, productive estuaries, marshes, tidal flats, urban areas, and harbors. And whereas a marine environment is one of the most valuable resources for recreation, tourism, fishing, coastal activities, and maintaining coastal biohome health. Coastal protection is a responsibility shared by residents, business community, and public institutions. And whereas the North Coast Environmental Center is Humboldt County's coordinator for 2024 Coastal Cleanup Month, taking place every weekend in September, during which hundreds of people will clean beaches, rivers, streets, estuaries, and watersheds throughout Humboldt County. Collecting trash upriver and in urban areas prevents plastics and other debris from accumulating in the ocean and marine habitat. And whereas the North Coast Environmental Center's adopted beach began in Humboldt County over 40 years ago, it is now celebrated throughout California, around the world. And last year, Humboldt County volunteers picked over 15,000 pounds of trash from our shorelines and coastal region. And whereas residents can be proud that year after year, Humboldt County continues to be among the state leaders in coastal environmental stewardship, helping to keep our oceans, rivers, and coastal line clean. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognize the month of September 2024 as Coastal Cleanup Month, and encourage individual businesses, service clubs, and public institutions to safely hit the beaches, streets, and watersheds to jointly promote a healthy, productive coastal environment. It's dated September 4th, 2024. Signed by Meredith Matthews, the mayor. And the person picking it up is going to be Sable.
Hi, thank you. The North Coast Environmental Center is excited to be celebrating our 45th year of coastal cleanups. We really want to emphasize the importance of stewardship across watersheds and of conducting cleanups in a way that is respectful and uplifting to the most at-risk members of our community. We're excited to be collaborating with a lot of returning site captains and member groups from previous years who are hosting cleanups every Saturday in September. And you can find a full list of Coastal Cleanup Month cleanups on our website at yournec.org/costalcleanupmonth. Hope to see you out there.
Thank you so much. All right, next, we have a proclamation recognizing September 2024 as Community Pride and Peace Month. And this proclamation will be read by Councilmember White.
Thank you. Whereas Community Pride and Peace, CPP, was formed with local support almost seven years ago to create five solution teams to address agreed-upon problems. And whereas Community Pride and Peace has a mission: inspire pride and peace in our community by putting solutions into action. Through unity and respect, our mission is to bring our communities locally and globally together to create and be the positive change we want to see in the world. And whereas CPP has helped make our community safer and cleaner, and has hosted events in Arcata, Valley West, McKinleville, and surrounding neighborhoods to invigorate and recharge community in collaboration with Arcata Parks and Recreation, the Arcata Police Department, local businesses, and other nonprofit organizations. And whereas CPP members provided volunteers with creating over 400 meals per day during COVID for meal distribution for the Unsheltered with Arcata House partnership. And whereas CPP now has almost 2,000 members on its Facebook page and is part of the INC. People's Dreammaker program. And whereas CPP has partnered with other local nonprofits and businesses to create events, clean up neighborhoods, share local resources, connect various organizations to solve problems together, and to feature local leaders. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata, in recognition of community, pride, and peace, does hereby recognize the month of September as Community Pride and Peace Month in the City of Arcata, and urges the Arcata community to support these efforts. Dated September 4th, 2024, by our mayor, Meredith Matthews.
And I believe we will make sure we get this to Ken Hammack. Thank you. And our final proclamation of the evening will be a proclamation in recognition of Queer Community and Cultural Awareness Month, September 2024. And this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Thank you. Whereas recent, as well as historic events in our own community have shown and emphasized how all people are affected by violations against those belonging to any marginalized group of people, it is extremely important for these underserved peoples, and especially their allies, to support each other and even band together to repel the negative forces that we may encounter. There are still many people that are being marginalized, isolated, or underrepresented, despite one of our community's greatest strengths being our rich and vivid diversity of people and cultures. And whereas, such events also bring to light the need for furthering the reduction of any forms of rhetoric, prejudice, racism, and discrimination that sometimes haunt our community. This can be done in a manner that fosters awareness and creates a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community for all people of all walks of life, as well as reinforcing the First Amendment protections for such people and cultures. During times like these, the queer community can serve as an example of this resistance to such negative forces, regardless of any orientation, gender, ethnicity, or any other notable differences. People in the queer community have had similar shared experiences, and this is a strength that has helped develop queer culture, businesses, organizations, and its people to not only serve, but also elevate the quality and wholeness of the community at large. And whereas, the city of Arcata celebrates the value, culture, and contributions of queer people to the community as a whole, as well as recognizing that the challenges and struggles of the queer community are akin to that of those that people in other marginalized groups have faced when their beliefs and cultures have been threatened. And whereas, the Redwood Pride Pride-ween Festival will be held in the city of Arcata on L Street, starting from noon to four. And thereafter, the evening celebration will be at Arcata Playhouse with an all-ages show from 5 to 7, and an 18 and older show from 9 to midnight on Saturday, October 19. And whereas, Redwood Pride invites all people from the city of Arcata, Humboldt County, as well as the surrounding areas to celebrate our unique, diverse, and colorful community with the Redwood Pride Pride-ween Festival Parade and Evening Celebration. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes September 2024 as Queer Community and Cultural Awareness Month in the City of Arcata, dated September 4th, signed by our mayor, Meredith Matthews. And we have April Nicolai, who's the director of Redwood Pride, which is a Dreammaker project for the INC. people, here to accept this.
Thank you again for being, letting me be here. It's always a privilege. And I was just gonna say that there were some slight changes with the plan for this year. Not having the parade part of it this year doesn't work with it being timed with the farmer's market very, very well. And the shows are actually going to be taking place the following day on Sunday, and an hour earlier. So with that, I can see people out there and that...
You probably update your social media to make that clear so people can know.
Yes. The changes just took place literally today, like a few hours ago. So I'm just going to be getting to that this week.
Right, it's time for council and staff reports. Is there any staff reports?
Just real briefly, I'll let you know, I'm real happy to be into my two and a half weeks in, but it's been great so far getting around with some of the department heads to be able to look at some of the projects. And Nitro was gracious enough to take me out to the Cal Poly Humboldt Housing Project at the Old Craftsmen's Mall, and then also to look at all of Arcata Road. And similarly, I was able to walk and look at the Gateway Project area and some of the general plan areas with David and get his perspective and a little bit of the past history. And then had a great walk with Councilmember White to look at the whole Valley West area and some of the issues and meet business owners in the mall out there. So I look forward to doing more of those. We have quite a few scheduled. I know we're planning to go around the plaza next week. And so, so far it's going good. And Karen, she was off this week, and last week will be her next week. I think she's here Monday through Thursday. So that'll be a wrap-up for Karen next week.
Thanks, Mayor. We're happy to have you. All right, let's do some council reports. I know we have a lot of people here wanting to make some public comments, so let's do some quick council reports. We'll start with Kimberly.
Okay. Yeah, I got to attend, as the city liaison, the monthly Redwood Region Economic Development Commission. We heard from Scott Thompson on Aquaculture Innovation Center, the vision for that, as well as the Nordic Aqua Farms project update. We also heard from Nitro Catri, our city engineer, and Connie Stewart, an update on broadband projects and policy. And Nitro also shared with other jurisdictions our DIG Wants policy that the city of Arcata has. That was well received. I also met as a board member with the REDEC Loan Committee and had the honor of approving another Arcata business loan. We had another successful community cleanup sidewalk event on Sunday. I did a walk, as shared with our city manager, with Merit in Valley West. Had a great time. Also, a reminder that not this Friday, but the next Friday, lucky Friday, the 13th that is, the official Carlson Park ribbon cutting at 5:30, as well as Food Truck Fridays at both the park on the 9/13 and 9/27. And also, don't miss our community hoop nights out there, which will be the entire month of September. And that will be Mondays and Wednesdays. All are welcome. Admission is free. Those interested this weekend is a Canfest at Halverson Park. And then this Sunday, September 8th, is the Arcata Out of Darkness Community Walk for Suicide Prevention. The open ceremony is at 10:00 a.m. on the plaza. And finally, if you have not taken the Bike Share Community Survey, please do so. You can find that link on the city's website and Facebook page. Oh, also, I attended a statewide emergency radio communication event. That was through Arcata CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team, in event that we have a disaster. And that was in collaboration with the Office of Emergency Services. That's all I have.
So I just wanted to say with the Humboldt Transit Authority, one of the things they've been looking at, because Greyhound is no longer wanting to service us in our area, and also it's the same. So they're thinking about coming together and creating North Star Express. And those hopefully will find buses that'll be comfortable. They'll be like a Greyhound bus, so you can sort of put your seat back. You'll be able to go down to Ukiah on it. And right now, they're doing really a big business going south, and they can't put the small buses. They have to have the larger buses. And having the time of free bus rides has been really advantageous, and they picked up a lot of riders. And they hope they'll continue. So we have the Activity Guide is now available for the Recreation Division. And it's just come out. It came out in the Arcata Eye today. And so that'll be a fun thing for many children and adults to do. And I've been watching on Neighbor Next Door, how many people are talking about dumping, and how the city has a code called Section 5445. And they say there are all these corners, this happened several times now, in the corner of Fifth and Union by the Phillips House Museum, where people just put their things out. And I was thinking my phone might not be turned off. Now it is. Where they're putting things out on the street, and they're really concerned about how to make that not happen. And we know that we have two large pickups a year from recology, if you have garbage service. And so I'm hoping that people start to think about doing that. So that's about it.
Very awesome. Last Monday was the Our Sister City Kamwhapa Ice Street Block Party. I had the honor of emceeing the latter half of it. And Councilmember Shaffer took the lead, but that was a lovely event. I really love to see our community come out together. Canfest is this weekend, if that is your thing. I just want to remind everybody, the weather is beautiful. It's a great opportunity to get out and shop at your local businesses, maybe sit outside at one of your local restaurants and have a cocktail. There's a lot of great happy hours around here. So just keep it local and enjoy the weather. I got back from DNC a couple of weeks ago. And while I do know that my position as mayor and council member is nonpartisan, it was my biggest takeaway, I think, was meeting lots of other local elected officials from small towns and large towns, and getting to go to the many caucuses, and hear from speakers that are facing some of the same things that we have. And it just gave me a great amount of pride to be able to serve this community and serve with these ladies. And that's it.
So a few things. I did get to go to the first part. We had a community workshop for the South Arcata Multimodal Safety Improvement Project. And it was a really great turnout. I thought there was quite a few community members there to give feedback on some, you know, preferences that they might have for making that part of town safer. And so I got to spend a little time with them. And so thank you to staff also for running that. It was, it was really good. And then our community development director, David Loyah, has been invited to present to the California Coastal Commission on Sea Level Rise Neighborhood Scale Adaptation Planning, specifically Arcata's adaptation approach and conceptual model. And he gave a run-through of the presentation that he will be making at a local meeting this morning, and I was able to attend. And the information he shared has also been shared more than once in our meetings when sea level rise concerns have been discussed. But I appreciated the opportunity to hear the thought processes and plans again. And once again, Arcata is being asked to lead an important discussion. So congratulations to David on this opportunity, and many thanks to the entire team for all your work for our community. And also, I know there was community partners involved too in this planning. So thank you for all of those who are working together with us on this important issue. There is a chamber mixer tomorrow, which is Thursday, at the Union Town Coast Central from 5:30 to 7:00. And also, through the chamber, a young professionals mixer Friday, the 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Septentrillo Barrel Room. And they will be doing free headshots for the folks there. So that's it for me.
All right, a couple updates. I did not actually attend my RCEA meeting this month because I had a conflict, but I am on that, our subcommittee for our executive director recruitment. And that process is going very well and should be coming to an end soon, which is exciting and means that there's exciting news to announce, which I can't talk about now. But it's coming soon, I promise. And then a lot of updates with Equity Arcata. We had our board meeting, and then also I participated in the Arcata Reflections event that was part of the Cal Poly Welcome Week, with the showing of the film Unsolved Hate, which is about the David Josiah Lawson murder, and the interns for Equity Arcata that are through the university but work with our city staff and do a lot of the programming. Just did such an excellent job putting that event on, and just their, their knowledge and expertise, and just, they did great. And they had a great summer as interns for Equity Arcata. And it was just super cool to see that event. It was kind of just a coming together of all that and an opportunity, you know. It was an event geared at students, and I think because it was raining, and there's so much stuff going on, there actually weren't that many students there. But there was a lot of community members and a lot of faculty from the university. And it was a really cool opportunity to have a conversation and get a lot of folks together. And also, I was on the panel for that event with Fernando Paz, who's kind of taking over a position for Equity Arcata as our interim Equity Fellow, which was super exciting. So we had our first board meeting with both Fernando being there and Merit being there as well, as new city manager. And just a couple upcoming events that Equity Arcata is kind of helping sponsor and put on, there's going to be a Oahu Hocken Writers' Visit. And these Oahu Hocken writers are coming from, to meet up with folks from the university and do just a few events in the community. It's a Wednesday. It's the 18th, yes. Well, there's a few events. So on Wednesday, the 18th, because there's the nighttime market, and then there's also the reading that they're doing at Northtown Books, which is on Wednesday, which is also the same time as another event. But so Wednesday at Northtown Books, the 18th of September, they're going to be doing a reading, and just having an event there at Northtown Books. And then on Friday is the event that's going to be out in Valley West. It's going to be at the Woodsmen Hall. And it's going to be, again, a reading, but also a community gathering, and just an evening event that's going to start later in the afternoon. And maybe Kimberly knows the time, because I'm not looking at my notes. What time is that?
Six to eight. But I also have that it's on the 19th, which is a Thursday.
Yes, that's the Thursday. The Wednesday is the event at Northtown Books, and then Thursday is the event out in Valley West. That's going to be that evening event from 6 to 8, and another chance to get to hear some of the work from the writers and interact with that, and just come out for the community. So that's super exciting. And then also happening that same week, so you gotta decide what you want to go to. But CR, Cal Poly Humboldt, and Temple Bethel are hosting a community conversation called Let's Talk About Palestine and Israel. And it's going to be, the opening event is going to be at the Community Center here in Arcata on September 18th, right smack in the middle of our council meeting. So I know we won't be able to attend that. But they're going to be doing some other events throughout the community in Eureka, as well on the 19th and 20th. So look for, you know, information coming out about that, if that's something you're interested in. And then lastly, Equity Arcata has their Home Away From Home Potluck this Sunday, September 8th, starting at 5:00 at the D Street Communities, D Street Neighborhood Center. And again, a great opportunity to come out, bring a dish, meet some of the students in your community, and, you know, share community with them. Last thing, because I'm looking in the audience and I see a T-shirt. I signed up today to do The Week Without Driving, which is coming up at the end of September, that CRTP is kind of sponsoring and putting out information about. So I urge my other elected officials, if they haven't signed up, I'm going to find a way to get to Pine Hill every day from Arcata on the bus. And it's going to be really exciting. And maybe difficult, but we're going to see how it goes. And I just thank CRTP for, you know, the follow-up email had a lot of great information, and the, you know, the walk audits and write-alongs. And it's going to be a really cool event. So just thank you guys for coordinating that. And I feel like I've talked a lot, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. So the City Council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. This early section of public comment is limited to 15 minutes, and speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of time for your public comment, this item is continued to the end of the meeting under Item 13, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take actions on items that are not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. There will also be time to provide public comments specific to each item when that item is being reviewed from the council. So this is a 15-minute period, and we will also take callers on Zoom. So I'll take the first four here and go to Zoom and go back if need be. So if you are here to make a public comment for an item that is not on the agenda, let's do it.
Thank you, City of Arcata Council and support staff. I am Steve Davis. I'm the firstborn son of our first dentist in McKinleville, and I love the city of Arcata. I've had the privilege of an undergraduate degree from Pacific Union College in Business and Art, and an advanced master's of arts from Andrews University in Barren Springs, Michigan, including media technology, public relations, marketing, and design. And I'm coming here with my hope that we will continue support of our artists and activities that might include our communities and artists in a new title, to me, art buffets. This is a table set up, and artists coming together, taking a table, setting their artwork on that table or along the walls, on easels, or what have you. It's something that is set up, and then the audience goes along the buffet line and selects their art pieces. And they can have a suggested price, a fixed price. They can have a 50-50 split for charity in philanthropy. And my first choice is to support our ambassadors. And this is an opportunity now for your feedback to me at some point in time of places and people, along with the Little Free Wildfire Wildflower Art Gallery. And Patricia Sinott has a nice grouping of places in the past that this continues. So I have samples of my work and a sample of a current letter.
Thank you so much.
Shall I give samples this way? Thanks.
Do we have anybody else in the audience that wants to make public comment on items that are not on the agenda? Is there anybody on Zoom?
There is nobody on Zoom with their hand raised.
All right. Well, then I'm going to close the oral, early oral communications. And then we're going to switch over to the meeting of the Successor Agency to the Arcata Community Development Agency. So sitting as the Successor Agency Board is new for a few of us, but this is the legal entity that manages the remaining bond debt service from the city's original original redevelopment agency, so we can act on these matters separately. So the Successor Agency Consent Calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the agency and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, agency board members can request that that item be removed for separate discussion. Members of the public may comment on any items remaining on the consent calendar in the comment period beyond, before the vote. So Item 1 is approve the secretary and the clerk of the board's filing of the 2024 Notice of Biannual Review Conflict of Interest Code with the City of Arcata and ratify the determination that no amendment is required. So would any agency board member like to remove an item from the successor agency consent calendar?
No.
Okay. Is there any member of the public wanting to comment on the successor agency consent calendar? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
So I would move to approve the secretary and clerk of the board's filing for 2024 Notice of Biannual Review and Conflict of Interest Code with the City of Arcata and ratify the determination that no amendment is required.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Stillman and a second by Councilmember Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The moment, motion passes. And now we will move along to the consent calendar. So all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are executed in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items, and if discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Item A is approve the minutes of the city council meeting of August 21st, 2024. B is a bi-weekly report on dispersments. C is to adopt ordinance number 1569, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcata amending the Land Use Code Title IX, Planning and Zoning of the Arcata Municipal Code, to adopt the Gateway Code and zoning districts throughout the city, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. D is to adopt ordinance number 1571, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcata amending Chapter 5 Residential Rental Inspection Program of Title VIII, Building Regulations of the Arcata Municipal Code, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. And E, approve the city manager's filing of the 2024 Local Agency Biannual Notice Conflict of Interest Code with the City of Arcata and ratify the determination that no amendment is required. I will pull Item C, because we'll have some members of the council that will need to recuse ourselves. But does any member of the council want to pull Item A, B, D, or E?
If not, I would move for approval of A, B, D, and E of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, but I'll now take public comment on the consent calendar. If anybody would like to make a public comment on Item A, B, D, or E, now is your chance. Anybody on Zoom?
No comments on Zoom.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for Item A, B, D, and E. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I will now ask my Councilmember Schaefer, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Atkins Salazar, and Vice Mayor Stillman to recuse themselves. All right. So Item C is to adopt ordinance number 1569, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcata amending the Land Use Code Title IX, Planning and Zoning of the Arcata Municipal Code, to adopt the Gateway Code and zoning districts throughout the city, waive the reading of text, and consent to read by title only. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment on Item C? All right. I will entertain a motion. And when you read the motion, could you read the whole?
I'll pick a motion to adopt ordinance number 1569, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcata amending the Land Use Code Title IX, Planning and Zoning of Arcata Municipal Code, to adopt the Gateway Code, zoning districts throughout the city, waive the reading of the text, and consent to read by title only. Is there something else I should add to that?
Nope, you're good.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember White and a second by Councilmember Schaefer. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. I will now bring my colleagues back in. All right. So we are going to move on to new business. And new business is to review proposed concepts for K Street improvements and provide direction as appropriate. And again, we're going to ask Councilmember Atkins Salazar to recuse. It's nice having you at the meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, I own a business on K Street, and so therefore I can't participate in this part of the decision-making.
All right. Can we get a staff report from City Engineer Netra Katri?
Yes, we'll get started. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember, and Member of Public. The item in front of you today is to go over some of the options that we've been working on for the K Street improvements. And this is how we will get started. So we've been working on this project with Environmental Services Department, so I will be doing presentation in partnership with Emily Singh Horn today. So she is here. And so this is what we have in the menu for today. So we will go over just brief background on the project, a little bit overview, and then what we did for the public engagement, and walk you over some of the options that we have considered for K Street. And then I will walk you through the whole plan, how the plans will look once the project is complete. And at the end, we have some options for you to consider, recommendations for you to consider. In our staff report, we did not put one recommendation, but we have some options for you to consider based on the public feedback we have received so far. So just for you and the members of the public, where the project is. So this is the project location map. You can see here. This is our beautiful City of Arcata here. All the yellow streets, yellow color, is major streets arterial, which has higher traffic volume. So K Street is one of them, which has an average yearly traffic of 7,000 on a given day. There's also 11th Street, which is also a major street, has a high traffic, and one of the priority location for future projects. Also, you may recall, in 2015, 16, we did a project called Bicycle Boulevard. So 10th Street and I Street are part of Bicycle Boulevard, and they are close to our planned project for K Street. And also, there is a Class 1 Trail, which runs parallel to K Street, which connects north to south of Arcata. So our project, K Street, has a limit from Samoa to 11th Street only. The inception of this project started during the planning phase of gateway planning and general plan, when there was a discussion of one-way couplet for K and L Street. However, during the discussion and public feedback, that idea was removed. At that time, council and the Planning Commission requested staff to look into the option for K Street, how that could be improved for bicycles and pedestrians. So that's how the project got started. We were able to budget some money, and we did some public engagement for, on which Emily will be talking. But it's not that we have not done anything on the K Street. As I mentioned, we did a bicycle boulevard project, and also we did some 8th and 9th Street improvement project. As a part of that, we made some improvements to the intersection of K and 9th and K and 8th. There is a rapid flasher beacon crossing at East, which was installed a few months ago, and also on 10th and I, which was installed in 2016. So there are some improvements done. Last paving project that was done here was in early 2000. Since then, we have not done any major paving project. We did some striping project last year. So this has been a higher priority project. So with that, I will just maybe hand it over to Emily. She will be going over some of the public engagement and options, and then I'll be back with some plans.
Great. Thank you, Natra. So just to set a framing for K Street, Natra has talked about it's a arterial street. It's used to access north-south in Arcata. It's crossed frequently by all modes of travel. Bikes, pedestrians, drivers are traveling along K Street quite a lot. And this is the general existing conditions. There's not a designated bicycle facility. There are bicycle sharrows that more indicate to drivers that bicycles may be taking the lane, taking the travel lane. There is parking on both sides of the street, and also a lot of driveways to residences and businesses. Just, I know most of us are well familiar with the corridor, but just some photos that also really touch on in the upper right is the Redwood Coast Montessori School located on the corridor. People cross in all modes. This is a location with a photo before the rapid flashing beacon that was recently installed. We have several thriving, many thriving businesses on the corridor that utilize K Street for deliveries and customers to come in. So it's, as we know, it's used for a lot of different purposes. So we've had a lot of public engagement on K Street over the last several years. As Natra spoke about, he presented what could be several options for enhancing bicycle facilities, improving crossing of K Street, and slowing speeds to the Planning Commission in 2023. We've also had a lot of input on all of our roadways in Arcata for safety through the Arcata Local Road Safety Plan. K Street and 11th Street were the top streets that really came up as interest and concerns and interest in implementing improvements. We also, as a region, hosted walkability expert Dan Burden last summer. And he walked with community members, a whole giant turnout, walking with community members, business owners, other stakeholders, and really seeing how that we can look at our streets as public space and offered suggestions and gathered input through that. And then we had really targeted outreach this past spring through a community survey and a workshop held at the Redwood Coast Montessori School to really focus on community members' concerns and ideas for improvements on both K and 11th Street. And I'll talk about more in a second, just the results and outcomes and feedback. And then we also conducted more door-to-door outreach along K Street last week and at the end of August, and got to have conversations with many of the businesses on the corridor and residents as well. So just to frame, especially the last two bullet points here, this last, from spring through, through August, we really focused on community feedback on several options. And these options, again, would add a bicycle facility in some way, as that was direction from the Planning Commission and the council. And to do so, there's trade-offs of how to utilize our street space. With the current configuration of K Street, in order to add a bicycle facility, something has to give. The one-way couplet on K and L was eliminated as a, as an option. And so we're really looking at removing some level of parking in order to fit a bicycle facility on K Street. So all of the options that were presented at the spring workshops and in the survey, and of a flyer when we went door-to-door, include options for removing parking from at least one side of K Street in order to add a bicycle facility. So Option A was removing parking from one side of the street and adding a traditional Class 2 striped bicycle facility and retaining parking on one side. Option B was looking at removing parking from all of K Street and having a bicycle, Class 2 striped bicycle lane on both sides with a two-way turn lane in the center. Option C of a bicycle facility on both sides, eliminating parking on one side, having a buffered bike way for a bit more space between the travelway and the bicycle facility on the northbound, but having parking on the curb side, like we are often used to. And Option D being similar, but having the bicycle lane be on the outside of the parking. So these were the options that were presented as options. Again, we received feedback on these and also interest in expanding or adding certain elements. We certainly received a range of feedback from the community, range of views on the preferred option. I would say the commonality was there was a real strong interest in enhancing the feeling of safety at intersections by enhancing visibility and removing a bit more parking at each intersection for all modes to be able to see oncoming traffic better. Of all the options, Option D had the most support and interest from the community. And many participants in the workshop and in the participants in the survey had requested further protections for a bicycle facility on K Street, such as a Class 4 protected bike way. In general, the city has received, or has recently had, survey outcomes that have indicated a greater preference for use of our public space for bicycle facilities than on-street parking in commercial areas. That came in the survey this spring that supported the council's decision-making around potential new sales tax. But there really has been, when there's specifics of a project, to really see the impact of the potential of losing parking, there's often much more of a range of views. When, after we received all of this feedback from the community, we looked at, okay, Option D had the most, the strongest preference. Let's see how we could fit that on the ground. When our staff began looking at the details, we realized that while we have a 50-foot right-of-way along K Street, the effective street width in many places is actually less than 40 feet. Many of either our sidewalks are greater than five feet wide, or we have some encroachments from adjoining structures into the right-of-way. And so the, in order to implement a quick-build project, lower cost with striping and materials that could be tried out and then removed, we really have effectively 38 feet of street to allocate different uses towards. And so that led us to consider trying to thread the needle between retaining as much parking as we could on one side of the street and adding a parking-protected bicycle facility on, for northbound bicyclists. A parking-protected bicycle facility has yet to be implemented in Humboldt County. We'll look at a couple photos of other, other facilities. A, and this is called a Class 4, show some pictures. A Class 4 facility is an on-street bicycle facility within the same street width, but that has some additional vertical protection between the travel lanes and the moving cyclist. This can be implemented with a variety of materials. Some can be concrete planters. Some can be materials that are either a greater expense or take more time to implement. Some can be implemented rather quickly with these type of delineators that are bolted down but can be easily removed. And we think this could be a way to try out such a facility and get community feedback on the use of that type of facility. The picture on the left is from Broadway. Caltrans did a pop-up demonstration with these type of delineators that was only up for a short period of time. There's a photo in Oakland in the center and kind of an example of some of the delineators that we would propose. So now Natra is more going to walk through what this modified Option D could look like throughout the corridor.
Thank you, Emily. Before I do that, I just want to maybe show maybe one more time the difference between Option D, and I'm sure we, you saw this in this, and Option D and Modified D. So in Option D, you see the bike lanes on both sides. One side has buffer without vertical separation, and other side is a Class 2 bike lane, which Emily mentioned earlier. The difference is, if you see on the left-hand side, we don't have a bike lane. We have to eliminate bike lane because we don't have a right-of-way. So there will be a shero, and there will be a shoulder on the left-hand side, or on the west side, if you want to call it. the west side, if you want to call it.
Could I just ask a quick question? In the regular Option D, it shows the sidewalk, but in the modified, there is no sidewalk? Is it just because it's not marked? Or is that going to be eliminated?
It will not be eliminated. It's just not marking Option D. There are sidewalks. We are not making, proposing any changes to existing sidewalk. We are proposing to work within the existing paved surface, which we call it from curb face to curb face only.
Thank you.
Can, can I ask a clarifying to that? Because I'm trying to like add, add these numbers up, and I think I'm kind of in the same spot. So that just has to do with that variable sidewalk length that we're dealing with, so that is why we go down to three to four feet instead of five feet? I'm just losing the other foot. Where's the extra foot?
Yes. So other foot you're losing is, some of the sidewalks are six and a half. And an earlier picture that we showed here, you can see sidewalk has shifted because the property is in the right-of-way, at least a foot. So adding a foot of property coming into our right-of-way and adding a six-foot sidewalk just, just takes away two foot from our right-of-way. So that gives us only 38 feet of paved surface between curb to curb.
So, but then is D just not possible then? Because that's what I'm, because it like looks like the spacing is all the same on Option D as it is on Modified D.
So, that's why we-
So D just isn't truly possible? Is that what?
No.
Okay.
That's right.
That's why we're modifying? Okay.
At the end of the public meeting, we were going to move forward with Option D, but when we went to the site and did the measurement, we decided that Option D is not feasible because of that limited right-of-way. So that's why we modified Option, we called it Modified D. So if we go with Modified D option, this is how the streets will look in a plan view. So I'll just walk you through block to block here. This is the plan view of K Street between Samoa Boulevard and Fifth Street. Only in this block, maybe I'll go on that later on. So what will happen is, because there are multiple driveways, the red line here is not very clear on this slide, but this is a driveway here where my mouse is. There's a driveway here, and there is a driveway here. So because of that, we cannot put those vertical delineators here because we need to give them access. So we are proposing only here and here. The black and green are our vertical delineators that we are proposing. Still, we will not be able to provide any parking because there is not enough space for parking in this block. There will be no parking on west side and no parking on east side, just because of the existing driveway, not because of the limited right-of-way, but to provide access to the driveways, we will not be able to give the parking there.
How many, how many parking spots does that eliminate?
In a block, I would say six plus six, 12 on an average. Okay. Thank you. I will, the reason I said 12, because first 25 on, at the intersection of Samoa, you're not allowed to park for the site visibility, and same is the case here. And then we'll talk more about what we are proposing to increase that width for, to increase the site visibility. So this is K Street between Samoa and Fifth, only two vertical delineators for Option Modified D. If we go between Fifth and Sixth, same condition here, we'll have only two parking on the east side, no parking on the west side. And even though the plan does not show, we plan to put a fog line that we showed on the section, which is like only three foot here. It will be, there'll be a white fog line striped here. And again, in all these options that we are showing, or all this plan we are showing, we are assuming that first 50 feet of the intersection will be red painted here, 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 here. And that's again, to increase the site visibility at the intersections.
What businesses are between Fifth and Sixth? Do you know? Is it?
Ecogroovy.
Ecogroovy.
Car shop.
Car shop, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the car shop and this is Ecogroovy. So in this block between Sixth and Seventh, same scenario, there'll be a white fog line. Here, there's three parking spots. And again, we could have put parking here, but there is an existing driveway and we have to provide access. And similar to the previous slide, we are not doing any parking within the first 50 feet of the intersection for all four corners, here, 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 here. Again, to increase the site visibility for vehicles and pedestrian crossing. Same scenario here, only two parking after the project is implemented between Seventh and Eighth. Again, we are not able to provide the parking because of existing driveway and for, to keep the site visibility for the driveways.
And that's the school, right?
School is on the, this side. This is the school. This is Humboldt Park, no, is that slice of Humboldt Park?
Previous block.
Previous block, yeah.
Okay.
That's the-
School.
Arcata trailer court.
Trailer court, yeah. Trailer court, that's right, yeah. Here, in this block, since we do not have a lot of driveways, we are able to provide six parking here in this spot. There'll be more parking than the rest of the blocks here because of, there are no driveways, and there's, there's only one, and we are providing access to that driveway. Same scenario, white fog line on the west side, parking, and white lane here. And again, first 50 feet of all the intersection will be red painted to improve the site visibility.
So the 50 feet, that's new, right?
That's new. Currently, we have 25. But based on the feedback that we have received through the public, we are trying to improve the site visibility.
I'm so sorry to keep interrupting you. We should just-
No, no, no. It's okay. Thank you. And then this is between Ninth and 10. Again, because of the existing driveways, we are only able to accommodate two parking, which is shown here, this and this, and because there are driveways here and here. And same, similar scenario between 10th and 11th, only three parkings and rest remains same. There will be a white fog line again on the west side, white lane here protected, this side again, and 50 feet, red paint, red paint, red paint, and red paint here. So what is that total to? So I think everybody wants to know, what is the parking condition today? So based on assumed parking style, currently, we believe there are 78 parking on K Street. That includes east and west side. If we increase the site visibility length from 25 to 50 feet for each block, that will reduce the parking from 78 to 50. And if we move forward with Modified Option D, that I just walked you through, the total remainder parking in that block would be, or in that whole project area would be only 18. So that'll be almost 74% reduction on the parking. So on purpose, we did not provide a single recommendation because now we were receiving public feedback, and there was no one straight recommendation to get today. So what we plan to do here is to give you some options and maybe open it for public and maybe have some discussion, and you can make some recommendations. So we have initial recommendation for you here as these four words. So at a minimum, definitely as I stated, increase the length of that red paint at each corner or each intersection from 25 to 50 to improve the site visibility. Currently, our standard is 25 feet. Others' potential recommendation could be do the Modified D as we proposed. One of the other options could be eliminate, because since we are just doing 18, maybe no other option could be removed, though. Hold on, this is the other one. Sorry, I misread that. So this is the Modified Option D with some minor adjustment that we could hear from you or from the public and how that will look like, and we can discuss that more if you want. And the last option would be to eliminate parking from both sides and put Class IV bike on both sides of K Street for the whole project area. So these are our initial. Emily, you want to add anything?
Okay. Does anybody have any clarifying questions? If not, I'm going to open up public comment, and then we can come back for conversation.
I, I was confused. So we have, you have four here, but they don't coincide with the four options that you've done here, A through D.
These are independent of that. So I would, to clarify, I would say, we are asking you to make recommendation for, only for one option, Modified D. We are not saying for A, B, or C. If you want to look at that option, we can look at, but not today. We are not saying to go with A, B, or C, or D. We're just asking a recommendation for Modified D.
Yeah, so we're just gonna, we're just focusing on Modified D, and we're going to make recommendations based on that, like how to modify even more or less.
And just to clarify, though, but that A through D was what was brought to the public, right? That's what the public engaged on?
That's great.
Okay.
And has the public engaged with Modified D?
No.
Okay. All right. Are we good?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I, I just wanted to clarify that at the end of August, we did engage with businesses and residents along the corridor on reviewing community feedback on A through D and then introducing the Modified Option D. So we have had engagement with businesses and stakeholders in the last week, and especially to then invite the council to hear from more people directly.
Excellent. Okay, if you'd like to make public comment on this item, let's line up behind podium. Everybody's got three minutes? Let's go.
Hello, I'm Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I want to thank the city for pursuing a quick-build safety project on K Street, which, as you know, CRTP and many others have been requesting for a couple of years. You know, even with L Street now dedicated as a trail, we really can't give up on bike and pedestrian safety on K Street. Anyone who walks and bikes in the area knows that there's a lot of trips, a lot of routes from A to B that require using or crossing K Street, and we really need that to be, to be safe for everybody. So to make it a safe street for everyone who uses it now, and certainly if we want to encourage more people to walk and bike on it, we think it's crucial to have safe infrastructure for biking in both directions. Also, safe facilities for bike left turns, which is one of the most dangerous movements that bicyclists have to make, as well as safer crossings for people biking and for pedestrians. So as you've seen, we're requesting a slightly different option, the one that includes Class IV bike lanes on both sides of the street. We're also requesting a few other small modifications, which includes corner islands made of bollards to allow bikes to make a protected two-stage left turn rather than having to merge with traffic. And that would be possible if you have the, the buffer zones on both sides of the street. And also, also just for making sure there are high visibility, high visibility crosswalks at all intersections, and also green paint for the bike-car conflict areas. We really think that those kinds of elements are necessary to achieve the project and the council's goals. We acknowledge, of course, that taking away the parking will require some changes, might be an inconvenience for some folks, but to be frank, we think that inconvenience needs to be weighed against the safety of our kids and our friends and our neighbors, and also the safety of our climate, which relies on us getting more folks out of cars. This is the kind of choice that we need to be making a lot of, a choice for change, for a safer neighborhood and a safer climate. And I think that in a town like Arcata, we should be prepared to make that choice. I also want to remind you that this is a quick-build project, which means not only that it's cheap and quick to build, so we can see safety improvements immediately, but also it's pretty easy to change. A lot of funding programs view quick-build as a part of the planning process because it's iterative. You can have some on-the-ground experience and change things if necessary. But really, we think that if you implement it, and especially if you follow the suggestions that we're making, we think that most people will really like the results and like to see that happen. So encourage you to move forward and implement that project as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wendy Ring, and I'm a local physician, public health professional, and, and a strong advocate of walking and biking. I think Class IV bike lanes are really essential in terms of, in terms of improving safety. I have really been enjoying the new bike lanes that we have, but I still know so many people in Arcata who won't bicycle because they feel it's not safe. And Class IV bike lanes increase people's perception of safety around, above 90%, and also have been proven from before and after studies to increase the number of people who will do a trip on a bicycle instead of in their car. So, so this is something that we really need to do, and K Street is the prime place. If you ever look at Street Story, which is a, a way that citizens can report online about near misses and collisions and places that they don't feel safe on streets all around California, it's, it's kept by UC Berkeley, I think. K Street has the highest density of near misses and collisions of any street in Arcata. So here's my question. I mean, if we, if we want more people to get on their bicycles and we want more people to feel safe, why would we set it up so that you can, I mean, who would go out on a bike trip if, if one direction is going to be safe and the other direction is not going to be? So you'd be like, okay, I'm safe going there, but I'm going to have to go the dangerous way in order to get back. So we, I really strongly believe too that we need to have Class IV bike lanes on both sides of the street. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Paul. I am the, kind of the other side of this, and I have two businesses on K. One is used furniture, and without parking on our side of the street, I really don't feel that we could operate anymore. I'm not going to expect my employees to carry a couch two blocks to get it to a van to deliver or pick up. I'm curious how the, the west side is the side with no parking, but the east side, what, how was that decision made? I'd like to know that. As far as things like slowing traffic, I kind of paid attention between Samoa Boulevard, Fourth Street, and 11th Street. There is one speed, speed sign on that street, and that is going north between Fourth and Fifth. And most, I would say, you know, most, much of the traffic is turning there off of other streets. So that, you know, seems like a smart way to slow traffic would be to have some speed The other thing is, I, I'm understanding from this meeting that this has been in the works for a long time. As a business owner, this is, we had someone come in the store, I think Friday or Saturday, spoke to my daughter in one store, and she said, you know, that her mom, the owner, was in the next store, and no one even came to speak to me, and two of those businesses are mine. The clothing dock has been there for almost 25 years. The furniture store, we're starting our 14th year soon. I don't know how I could operate. I've been a bike rider my whole life until shortly, I had to give my bike away not too long ago. The former owner, well, his son owns it now, Helmut Remo, as a lot of you might know, is an avid bike rider. He was also a businessman. I can't imagine if he were alive today, he would be supporting this thing. There is also a dedicated pedestrian and bike lane one block away that is no vehicles. Just, you know, personally, I know there are other business owners here, and I, I just can't picture how we would operate our businesses. And, you know, is there going to be compensation for businesses that have to go out of business? So I'm not a public speaker, but thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Matthews, I just want to let you know that we do have commenters waiting on Zoom whenever you want to get to them.
Thanks for having us. I'm, I'm Jeff. This is my wife, Shalise, and we're the owners of Humboldt. She got me a little choked up there. But yeah, I just want to echo her, her comments. I don't think it's possible to operate a business. I don't see any other example of that in Arcata, where there's not a safe place to unload and dispatch inventory, you know, when I'm doing deliveries and stuff. Am I expected to wait in the street? Am I, you know what I mean? And I'm also a bicy- And I'm also a bicyclist. You know, I went to, to HSU for environmental studies. You know, I'm not, it doesn't fall on deaf ears when, when we hear that we need to pollute less and all the rest. But it's kind of like, at what cost? Sustainability is at three pillars, right? We can't just favor one thing and not the others. There's countless businesses that are struggling. It's hard enough to operate a small business in Arcata. To see some pressure like this being legislated against us is really troubling. I'm curious to know how many business owners were contacted because it was late notice, and luckily we were there after 5:00. And the people I talked to were really gracious and open ears, and that was great. But this thing needs a lot more conversation. It's a drastic move. We already feel pressure from the landlords across the street. They've modified their houses. They have multiple tenants parking on the street every day. That needs to be taken into account for when we add these public parking spaces. It's no longer public. And, you know, so we, we, we also see what happens on K Street every day. It's a crazy street, and there needs to be improvements. And like you said, it is an artillery street. We don't need to encourage bicycle traffic along that street. We need to be safer for those bikes to, to cross that street from the established bicycle facilities that we've already paid for. And it, your propositions are great. Increase that buffer zone, increase the visibility. You know, that needs to happen, for sure. But to harm small businesses in this fashion, it's just, it's too much.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, the street could be a lot safer. Like, that is a huge issue. But the cost of all of that parking, like, literally today, the street was totally full on a Wednesday. And during events, the whole street is full by 10:00 AM. So when there's stuff going on in the plaza, when there's the farmers markets, the street is entirely full. And our customers have already complained about not stopping in because there's no parking. And it just, yeah, it's just really unfortunate and a big stress that as a small business owner in Humboldt is just something that like, you know, just shouldn't really be a big issue. And there's the bike lane right behind us, like, a block away. Money was spent on that. It's paved.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amber. I'm one of the owners of Slice of Humboldt Pie. I unfortunately can mirror a little bit of everything that everyone has said. I was notified about this about 4 o'clock this afternoon, and I am at work every morning from 3:30 in the morning till about 5:30. So I made it very important to come down here. We would lose our business without the parking in front of our street just on the way here. It's so crowded. We've got four tenants upstairs, four tenants just adjacent to us, the property on 660 K Street. Our parking lot itself has tenant parking and disabled parking, leaving us with four other spots. Those are always filled. I can't even unload my vehicle. And it would really kill our business. We're not even in the rainy season yet, and I see people going, there's no place to park, I'm going to just keep going. And one of the things about moving to this new location is we started hearing, man, now that you're not near a two-hour parking and not near the plaza, we're going to stop by. We've had more people praising us from Eureka, like, oh, finally come to Arcata. I don't have to go near the plaza, and I can just zip on and park on K Street. There's no two-hour parking. I can, you know, safely park there. There is a bicycle lane just a block over that people can use. We bicycle. We have young children, well, not, they're not anymore, but we bicycle. I understand K Street is dangerous. I, I see it. But I think there's something else that we could consider before completely killing the livelihood of these small businesses.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and it's interesting that this is coming up today because I actually walked from my home near the marsh on the other side of Samoa to an appointment I had near the plaza, and then down 10th Street, and actually purchased a wonderful house plant from these two wonderful people at their wonderful business on K Street. I walked because if you really look at the bus routes for the city of Arcata, and that's the whole modality that's been left out of this whole equation, is the buses. And it was a hot day, and so I had to walk a lot. And I carried my wonderful new plant home. But there is a bike lane, and we fought really hard for L Street. And the thing that Arcata doesn't take into consideration with all these different plans is integrating them and grading them together. And the gate, we'll start with the Gateway Plan. We want to have all these people living in the Gateway area. I used to live in the Creamery District, walked across K Street all the time at 10th Street and in other locations. But the whole thing is, we need to move that 30-year-old bus transit center hidden away next to the ball field and really make visible the alternative way to get around here. And K Street with buses is a much safer way to go. It'll slow things down. People will not use their cars, they will take the bus. And they'll get off at Humboldt Pie, and they'll get off, you know, at 11th and K Street. It really, I had a friend over at the coffee break who takes the bus from down in the Bottoms area, and she told me, I was going to go to the HTA meeting this morning, and I got there and it was canceled, so I didn't get to put the input in. But she told me, talk about the fact that it takes an hour and a half on the Gold Route and the Red Route to get from where she lives to Sunny Bay. And so we really need to upgrade our buses as an incentive to getting out of our cars. Because I might not be able to bicycle anymore, and I might not be able to walk as far as I can anymore. And it's really hard because there's no benches to sit on while I'm trying to, you know, walk and take a rest every once in a while. So put the buses on K Street, and people will go and, and, you know, frequent these businesses, and cars will be deterred. And bicycles can go on L Street.
Thanks, Joanne. Let's hold our applause, but thank you.
Hello, I'm Andy Salazar, and I have a house and a business on the corner of 10th and K Street. Thank you for recognizing that K Street needs safety improvements. As you consider the options for K Street, I would like to make you aware of the number of children and parents that come and go to our dance studio, and that the changes that you make can impact their safety. I heard a lot about safety today from several speakers, so let me tell you about my safety concerns. Our dance studio is located on the east side of K Street, and we have between 75 and 100 children that take dance classes every weekday. Although we are, we have a flashing crosswalk light at the corner, crossing K Street is still very dangerous. We continue, we continually work to educate our students, parents, about the dangers of K Street and the precautions they need to take. Having parking and access to dropping off students on the east side of the street is an important safety for our students and families. I support protected bike lanes. I also support finding a way to slow down traffic on K Street. If there isn't room for everything on K Street, maybe we should consider promoting L Street as a preferred way of travel for bikes, and work to find safe ways for the bicycles to cross and pedestrians to cross on K Street. From my perspective, had the council decided to shift one direction of traffic onto L Street, we would have had room to, for the complete streets on both K and L Street, making two-way traffic for everyone safe and accessible. We could have two vibrant trail systems, but making the decision to not develop L Street is impacting the safety on R Street, K Street. I support the staff's recommendation for Option D, which has protected bike lane on the east side. And I support, and I support that. But removing all parking from K Street would be a much bigger change with greater impacts that I ask that you do not consider that option. I'll repeat that again. I ask that you do not consider that option. Thank you for your time and your service to our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Anybody else in person to comment on this item? We will not be going back and forth. All right, let's head to Zoom. Yeah, all right, all right.
Yeah, I'm sorry I came late. I received this at my door. I live on 9th and K, right next door. And I agree, with little I heard, that there's already a parking problem on K Street. And with Option D, which I believe is preferred, it's going to eliminate parking. And that's not a good thing, because it's already impacted right now. As a matter of fact, right now, there's probably 12 cars parked on, in that block between 9th and 10th. So I wish you would choose an option that does not eliminate the parking on both sides. Regarding the bicycle lane, I think that we already have a bicycle lane on L Street, and we should encourage bicyclists to use that trail over there by the Creamery to go north and south. And when they have to, bicycles and automobiles should just simply share the lane on K Street as it is, as it is right now. There's already a marked bicycle path, or at least some kind of, acknowledge that there's bicycle use in that lane. And drivers of cars and bicyclists should recognize that they have to share the lane and be respectful. I don't think making a separate bicycle lane is going to make them any safer. It's just going to make them, may perhaps feel a little more entitled. They should share the lane. Regarding parking, I don't think that the parking should be moved away from the sidewalk, because then we'll have, someone getting out of a parked car will have traffic on their left side, automobile traffic, and bicycle traffic on their right side. And it's just going to make an unsafe situation for getting in and out of your car. So cars, when there is parking, should be next to the sidewalk. So I wish there was an Option Zero, meaning no change. And that's what I would propose. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Let's go to Zoom.
Okay, we have attendee Kelsey Martin. Go ahead.
Hi there, my name's Kelsey Martin. I am with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, or CRTP. Since everyone can be here today, we just wanted to read off a few things that we found on Street Story. I know that was mentioned earlier, so we just want to show a few specific things that have been reported on there from residents. So the reports indicate poor visibility on K Street, you know, as many of us know, mainly due to parked cars. And then often, drivers are speeding, and the people trying to turn onto the street cannot see incoming traffic because of the poor visibility. So having, you know, that extended corners would be really great, as well as no parking. The speeding and poor visibility has created many crashes and close calls on K Street. People report feeling unsafe biking, walking, and especially crossing the roads, even at crosswalks, even at the high-visibility one. Drivers often do not yield to pedestrians, even at highly visible, oh, I just said that. One report mentioned their 15-year-old son was struck by a car at K and 11th Street while walking to school from the bus station. And then reports also indicate that bicyclists do not feel safer with the bike boulevard. One bicyclist reported, I was riding south on K Street. I was in the share-o zone, but not all the way to the right of the lane in order to avoid being hit by the doors opening suddenly from, you know, the row of parked cars. I suddenly heard loud, repeated honking behind me. Looking in my bike's rearview mirror, I saw a pickup truck accelerating towards me at a rapid rate while the driver honked their horn. I had to swerve into the shoulder. Luckily, there were no parked cars at that particular location in order to avoid being hit. You know, and it seemed they were trying to speed them out of the way, which is a common occurrence for bicyclists on that road. And pedestrians have also talked about crossing the street and cars not yielding to them, even when they're halfway through and extremely visible, and not slowing down for them, which has caused many crashes and near misses and becomes a hazard for folks. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So next, we have the user shown as iPhone.
Hi, this is. Hi, this is James Becker, and I live in the Gateway District, and I do appreciate the feeling of large-scale change happening, and therefore, after listening to K Street residents and businesses, you know, ask the council to consider modifying D. As was pointed out by Patricia, as we looked over things, it appears there might be a lot less curb drops on the west side of the road. And it seems like it could be beneficial at that point, that, you know, perhaps you could pick up more parking on that side. Once again, I mean, there's, it's the question of solutions and what might work best, but it sounds like eliminating all parking would be a hardship, definitely for the businesses, and I'm guessing to some degree for the resident, I mean, for the residents too. It's, it's always a big trade-off. And beyond that, I would consider the fact that as you go down K Street and you're coming back up K Street, at 14th, I believe it is, is where the L Street entrance is to, to get on the bike path, that could be considered a return for that area as far as people returning on L Street to, for the southbound. Something I've kind of looked at and I thought might be a solution. And it would keep the flow going at that point. And with that in mind, you might be able to get away with that being the return bike path, coming back south through town. And beyond that, that's my main thing, my two cents. And I, like I said, I do appreciate everybody as far as just being able to express what their needs are as businesses. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thanks, James.
And then we have somebody shown as then asterix. Go ahead, whoever's asterix.
Hi. So this, this is Pegasus Community, I'm the asterix, sorry. So, yeah, there are a lot less curb drops on the west side of K Street, so maybe looking into actually flipping the parking from the east side, which is the plaza side of K Street, to the west side, might be a solution. And then also keeping that bicycle path on the west side, but, and, you know, keeping it buffered. And then maybe re-looking to see if we can fit both two bicycle paths on each side. Also, you know, separating the bicycle and the parking lanes would eliminate a lot of the risks such as, like, car doors opening into the bike lane and such. So I think that might be a nice solution that we should investigate a little bit further. A common thread that I've heard with all the speakers is that L Street bicycle path is a great pedestrian and bike thoroughfare. And when I talk to people, most people use that, and they just hub out from that in all directions, like going towards the plaza, going towards the school, et cetera, going towards the marsh, et cetera. So I still think L Street could be the main thoroughfare for bike and pedestrian. And, and just one northbound bicycle lane would be, could be needed on, or would be helpful on K Street. It's also, you know, it's curious, because we hear a lot that we really need to support our local, small local businesses. And I think this is a perfect, perfect example how Arcata can really listen to its community, to its smaller businesses, and to the homeowners in the area. And maybe we need to sit down as a city and talk to them. I really like green paint on a bicycle route. I think 8th and 9th Street need to have those added as well. I'm a proponent of painted crosswalks. I really like the flashing light on 8th Street and K. It was drastically needed, and I think it's really helping. So, so, yeah, I, I think we should also revisit Dan Burden's numerous solutions that he gave to the city on that walk. I can send you a lot of his suggestions that he made. There are many more than I've covered here. So I'm also really curious on who you, what businesses were actually talked to. So it kind of sounds like a few were maybe left out. So, yeah, if we could re-join and talk to those businesses and those homeowners, I think it would make it a better process in the long run, and make most people happy.
Thank you, Patricia. Thank you so much.
Thank you for trying to make K Street safer.
So that's it for public commenters on Zoom.
All right, well, that's it. I will bring it back to the council.
May I ask for a break, for a restroom break?
Yeah, let's take five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joanne.
I'm looking at this screen, and it looks fine. So this is the first time I've been able to speak about anything within the Gateway, and L Street happens to be one of that area, in that area as K Street. And I feel as though, as far as L Street's concerned, it's like a desert. I go up and down and look at it, there's nothing much going on there. We do have the trail, the walking trail. But I feel as though the council, this is my opinion from watching the Gateway meetings from in there or wherever I was, that many people really pushed hard to make sure the council would not have any kind of traffic on L Street, and I think it's totally inappropriate. What has happened is that everything has been pushed onto K Street, and so we have to do everything on K Street. We have to figure out how to put parking there, no parking. Bicycle lanes, no bicycle lanes. It's totally inappropriate. And I would like to see it readdressed, now that I can actually talk about L Street, and think about how we can make it actually work better for the entire community within Samoa and 11th Street. And I would like to see us really move the bike lanes onto L Street. Now, I know that there's people in the audience, and I've sent things back and forth to Colin, and he really feels like I know that K Street is the best thing. But we're really impacting a road that is also a major connector for Arcata. And as Emily mentioned, it goes from one part of Arcata to the other. It goes from Visage subdivision all the way to Samoa. And we get funding for it because it's considered a state highway. And I think that for us to, all of a sudden, impact one street totally and just let another one just sit over there, L Street, with nothing, and, you know, I never really agreed that we shouldn't have traffic on L Street. And I thought we could really make things work if we had L Street and K Street functioning. We could have bicycle lanes and one-way traffic, and it would really have worked well. Now, we're at this point, we're just going to make a mess out of K Street for businesses, not for the bicycles, so they'll all be really happy. But I don't -- well, maybe they will or not. But when you think about Tenth Street, and that is one of the connectors, and it comes across, and you can go over to L Street, and then you can make a connection down L Street. And there's only one place that you can't connect from L Street over to K, and that on Sixth, and that is in the storage unit area. But everywhere else, you can connect over, and you have an opportunity to cross K Street to go wherever you're going, on Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, Tenth. Tenth, you may want to be on because it's a bicycle. I really liked it, have it all looked at, and I think it's really unfair what we're doing today. And I appreciate all the work you've done on coming up with this and doing it. But I have not been able to talk about it. I have a lot of thoughts, and I have all along, and I'm really sorry to see that we've gotten this far and not been able to look at equity and fairness throughout.
Okay. And can I add to that? Because that's like the part that's disheartening to me here, though, Alex. We did a lot of meetings, and we did a lot of outreach on L Street and K Street, and it was really hard because the definite, like, ethos of the conversation was like, okay, cool, if we're not going to do this, then we need to improve safety on K Street. What is it going to take to remove safety, improve safety on K Street? Probably take away some parking spots, right? Like, that was front-loaded, and I get, like, I'm not, I'm not ready to move forward tonight, probably, just to put that out there. Because I just, due to hear, you know, that business owners on that block weren't contacted until, you know, this week, and this is a quick-fix project. The idea is to move it forward quickly to kind of see. And I'm curious, and that might be too much, I don't know, staff work and stuff, but if there is a possibility of doing any, like, like Eureka did, like, the temporary, like, let's see what it's like, and let's see what the impact is like for a week, two weeks, whatever, to look at, like, what that, you know, cutoff bike lane would be like, just to really understand. But I do want to ask a few questions, because I think that, like, everybody here is of the agreement. And I'm not just, like, talking out of nowhere. I live on the corner of Ninth and K. I know. I park on K Street all the time. I drive on K Street all the time. I walk on K Street all the time. I bike on K Street all the time. I don't walk my dog even on the sidewalk on K Street because it doesn't feel safe. I go over to L Street. And so, you know, something's got to give on safety. And so, a few of my questions, natural, just of things that I don't see that I would like to, like, look at more. What updates are being made to the intersections besides, I do really support the increased sightline because it's really hard to, you have to creep out so far in your car to be able to see around the parked cars, to even know if somebody's coming, or see where pedestrians are, or see if a bicyclist is coming. And, you know, I like, I like that idea. I support that idea. But are there any other updates that are being made to the intersections, especially, like, thinking about bicycle left turns? Or I know that, like, because some of, with the Eighth and Ninth Street, like, some of those bulb-outs and corners have been improved, but some have not. And so what would that look like throughout the project?
So to answer that specific question, as a part of this project, we are not planning to do any infrastructure improvements or the sidewalk. There'll be mainly red paint at intersections and increasing the, maybe striping for high-visible crossing, whatever is there existing. That was a part of the project.
And then, so what was the rationale? Because I know a commenter asked, and I was also, like, sparked of interest, as to why the west side as opposed to the east side, or other way? Why taking the parking from the west side as opposed to the east side? Just because, kind of rattling around in my brain, I actually feel like there are more businesses maybe on the east side, or they, I guess they kind of vary because there's, like, pockets, but...
I'll respond to that, and I'll maybe let Emily add to that. My understanding is that we left parking on the east side because most of the people who come to the farmer's market or the downtown area, they will park, they will be parking on the east side, and it'll be, they don't have to cross the street. I think that was the justification mainly.
And then, oh, I totally lost that question.
So my dad was an entrepreneur, so I'm keenly aware how this would affect businesses. In fact, one of his businesses was a furniture store, and if they would have taken away his parking, he would have lost his business. I'm disturbed about the fact that many of these business owners are just finding out. I also have that same question of why the east versus west. It seems to me that on the west side, it might benefit more to have the parking there. And also, I would like to go back to revisit some of the Dan Burden options. I am not thrilled with any of the options that have been presented here, and I would like to go back to the drawing board. And I would like to have more engagement with the businesses as well.
I remember my question. Natural, what was that feet number that you're giving, like, the working distance? Because, don't look at my paper, it looks like a mad woman, but I'm coming up with ideas here. So how much feet do we have to work with?
Thirty-eight.
Ooh.
From pavement surface to, from face of the curb to face of the curb, thirty-eight.
Okay. And is it, like, an absolutely crazy idea? Has this ever been done before? I guess it's basically creating a trail, though, right? That, like, both bike lanes going both directions are on one side, and then parking is retained on the other. I don't know. That's just kind of what I drew out here, and it looks like it comes out to about thirty-eight feet with still, like, protected bike lane. It's like, I guess, would just become a trail at that point, but I don't know. That could work. And then you would retain parking on, like, the west side, and then have two ten-foot travel lanes, and then enough to have a ten-foot bike lane? Or I guess an eight-foot trail with a two-foot buffer? I don't know. That's just an idea.
It's a good idea. It did come up during discussions. We did not present it as an option. When the discussion came in, the concern was, for example, here, in this case, if we have a two-way bike lane here, how would you transition them from here to the other side? They have to cross here, and then they have to cross here. Every single intersection they have to cross. So that would be just adding more, more conflict to it.
I'd say that a two-way cycle track or protected bikeway could be considered as part of a larger effort, and especially with that network connectivity for how the transitions would happen at K and 11th. That would be beyond a quick-build project. But that's, if there was direction, that's certainly something that we could look at further. K Street may not be ideal because of the number of driveways and intersections. From other places that I have ridden with two-way cycle tracks, it has worked, it seems to, as a, anecdotally, it seems to have worked better when there's less potential conflict points and crossings. And maybe that is better suited for a different type of street. So those were just some of the considerations we...
So when you look at L Street, you do not have those issues because you don't, you have very few driveways on L Street because it's the way it's developed. And in the future, development could be done in such a way that you made sure you weren't impacting with driveways onto L Street. And I'm, I'm thinking that we should really visit L Street, and that could be a two-way bike lane that you're mentioning. You just have everybody there.
I mean, there's already a trail on L Street that does that.
Well, then, we have, then we're already meeting our goals if that's already a two-way track, track, as you mentioned.
Okay. So the problems that I see with K Street, right, there's the big problems are the speed the people go, needing traffic calming measures and measures and visibility. And I will add a fourth, which is enforcement, right? I think that definitely need, like, higher visibility of some kind of deterrent for people to go past on that street. I live on that, I live on Alliance. I, you know, in my quest for getting 10,000 steps a day now, have been walking up and down Alliance often. And, you know, as soon as I saw that this was on the agenda, I've been driving up and down often and looking at the parking situation, and there are a lot of cars parked. And, you know, we have done a lot, right, to mitigate parking. We've closed down the plaza during the farmer's market. We, you know, we're making a lot of concessions. We have L Street. So, you know, I'm not really sure that this is the answer. I mean, I see the point of, you know, having it be like the fifty feet so there's visibility so I can maybe live with, you know, fifty spots instead of seventy-eight. Not, I don't know if I can, but I can't live with going down to eighteen spots. It just, it's just not, you know, the way of businesses that are suffering. So, and I would also like to see, you know, some more maybe directional signage to let people know, hey, we've got this beautiful trail on L Street, you know, go that way. So those are my thoughts. And yeah, I'd like to kind of revisit, and I would like to maybe have more opportunity to engage, engage with these business owners and residents, because I don't really feel like we've given them kind of enough time. I know when we were talking about L Street, that was like years and years of conversation. So I, this is a big deal, and I feel like it needs, warrants a lot more conversation.
Yeah. And I just want to add, too, I mean, just particularly talking about L Street, like, yes, you sat maybe in the back, Alex, but like, we sat through a lot of meetings about L Street. Alex, let me finish, please. Alex, just let me finish, please. And we did a lot of engagement with the public, going out there, meeting on the trail with people, meeting with community members, talking about it. And I just am totally uncomfortable with the idea of going back on that. It just makes no sense. I'm not, I'm not here for that tonight. And so, just making that very clear. And then I want to add just into what Meredith was saying, too, that we need to also take into account that we recently did the Eighth and Ninth Street improvement projects. And as somebody that lives on Ninth Street, I can attest to the fact that there is significantly less parking on Ninth Street, which has resulted in a lot of people parking on K Street. Also, the, I wonder, has timed parking on K Street been explored? Because that's something I want to ask about, because I think that that definitely actually could benefit the business members or owners, because a lot of people who maybe live there park there. I honestly probably think that a couple of those auto body or auto shop folks just park cars out there, I've seen, and that they're not moving. And I know a lot of folks that, like, work at the co-op park on, like, Ninth Street and K Street because that's when the timed parking stops. And so, has, like, also looking into adding timed parking to K Street been any part of this engagement? Because if we do retain parking, I want to see it prioritized for these business owners and for, like, business going in and out and having loading zones and things like that, because, like, that's the part that's like, oh, yeah, how are these people going to access loading zones or their businesses that are on that west side? And so, just, that would be great to explore, or if you guys have done any outreach on that, I'd love to hear about it.
And I know that we've been talking for a long time about a parking study, whether it's parking on the plaza, or parking in North Town, or parking on K Street. And I'm just really interested in what parking looks like. You know, we just approved this whole Gateway Area Plan that does not, so, you know, those empty spots that are on K Street eventually, hopefully, will be businesses that do not have to provide parking. So I, we need to take that into consideration as well.
Well, do you think possibly L Street could become a parking, more of a parking lot, more of a parking area, that you could just move everyone over?
No, I necessarily want to add parking, but just, like...
Well, no, if you're going to take it off of one place, you have to move it to another. You have a lot of residents that live in that area. You have people that have tenant, not, they have, well, you have a slice of humble pie. They have people that work for them that have to park somewhere, and they're parking in front of other people's homes, and they aren't always happy about that. in front of other people's homes and they aren't always happy about that. And we don't have any way, except around the university, to have any kind of permit parking. That's the only place that we have. I think Eureka is discussing some of that and trying to come up with more additional permit parking for people that don't have parking on site or have businesses of that nature. And so, this is a whole discussion. And of course, you know, I've watched this go on. I know you, I feel like you guys did a good job with all the people that were coming and asking, get rid of everything on L, L Street. L Street has to be a park, whatever. So, I feel, I felt bad for you because I felt like it wasn't the best decision that was made.
Don't feel bad for us. That's my job.
I don't really think it's, like, appropriate to talk about these issues in this life. The recusal, like, it's just not, I don't think that's...
I think we, it needs to be revisited.
All right. I'm going to bring this conversation back. So, I feel like the consensus right now is that we would like more time to talk to business owners, to do some kind of parking study, and to really dig deep into what we can do to make K Street safer, you know, calm the speed down, increase visibility, enforce people that are speeding and do some mitigation. But I don't think at this point, we're going to be ready to move forward with any of these suggested...
And we have one, one person that wrote to us, Gordon Johnson. He suggested that we do, like, on I Street, a small little roundabout and that would definitely slow down traffic.
Okay.
And just to add, too, that, like, some of these points really are the things that we're in the walk on it and, like, full onboard support, you know, whether we are doing anything to bike lanes or parking or anything, but that decrease from twelve to ten feet on the, the lane width. Because, like, that was his, I feel like Dan Burden's main thing. If you're driving on this big, wide-open, straight road, you're going to want to drive faster. But if it feels tight and there's cars on one side and there's, you know, parking on the other, you don't want to increase that speed and it naturally calms it. And so, I do definitely, like, let's keep that.
Yeah. And twenty-five miles an hour, I mean, it's slow. When I drive with my husband, I'm like, dude, slow down. I mean, it's really, and you have to be mindful of it. And so, I think that we need to have some enforcement to remind people to slow down, especially, you know, schools in session. There is a school, you know, my son goes to school on Eleventh, you know, on Eleventh at NPA. And then there is Montessori. I mean, there's schools around, too. People really need to be mindful of speed. So, safety first and let's continue the rest of this conversation. Is that okay with everybody?
So, the direction that we're giving staff then...
It's no direction.
Well, we are. We're asking for more time. We're asking about a conversation for traffic study and, and more engagement with our businesses so that they don't feel like the day of, that they're finding out.
Yeah. Are you okay with that?
I am. And I also concur with Sarah that I want to move forward, not backwards, on the L Street.
Amen, sister. All right. I think, I think we're good. Are we ready to...
Yeah, I think we have direction and it's going to be taking a little more confidence.
And thank you for all the work that you've done on this. We really appreciate it.
Can I add something? May I? As you know, we've been working on this for a while. And based on the public feedback and comments, definitely making no recommendation. I think it will be not fair for those people who provided some feedback and they are looking for some improvements. The first recommendation, definitely, it makes sense and makes K Street have more sight visibility. Maybe we should maybe at least consider that. And then maybe explore other options as you've suggested. Definitely, parking is on our list as a goal, a department for this year. So, we'll be working on the parking for the citywide. We just formed a subcommittee at our TSC to, just to focus on the parking. So, definitely we'll be looking into that. But we should not be holding this project on that because that will take a long time to make those decisions on whole parking for the whole city. It will not be happening in six months or even twelve months for that matter. It takes time to do a parking study and analyze the whole city, what's the need for parking is for future. So, I would at least suggest maybe moving forward with at least recommendation number one, moving forward, and then exploring other options. We were going to show you, based on the feedback that we have heard as an alternative, but maybe that will not go well, but at least since we thought about it, we just wanted to present it. We are not saying we should move forward with this, but for the area, for the portion of K Street between Tenth and K, definitely moving forward with this. But adding a twenty-minute parking zone in this area for the businesses that they can load and unload stuff at that, in front of the businesses so far. Because definitely, no business wanted, wants a car to be parked for more than two hours to, for the business to move forward. So, it'll be a short-term parking, loading, unloading, people coming in, dropping. So, keeping that area for, only for loading, unloading, maybe twenty-minute parking area, only for that block.
And I would also agree with the fact that we should mark the corners back so that you can see that, Sarah mentioned that, and I can, I know that's an issue. A safety issue when you're pulling out, you can't actually see.
Okay, I'll just stop there.
Okay. I'm all right with the, with the first suggestion. Anything else?
I mean, yeah.
I would like more discussion.
I, I mean, I, I don't think we're saying just scrap it, like, bring it back in a month, you know? That's kind of how I felt, just so I can get my own bearings of talking to folks, too. But a, as I said before, I mean, I totally support the, the fifty-foot sight visibility and I also support the ten-foot lanes. So, if we want to move forward on those two things...
Those are two things that I absolutely agree on.
I would be very happy to move forward on those tonight because that's part of getting the paint out and doing all that.
Yeah. You can talk to us after, I'm sorry, we can't do any more public comment. So, with fifty feet, we're going down from seventy-eight parking spaces to fifty parking spaces. So, there is a net loss of parking, but it is a huge increase in visibility, which is one of the big, big problems with K. And I'm still, like, uncomfortable with that, but...
Twenty-five.
So, it's fifty feet of red. Is that from the corner? Is that what it is? And now it's ten? Twenty-five.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. We can't, we can't have, we can't, we already took public comment. I'm super sorry.
So, it's fifty feet on both sides from the corner. Is that, is that correct?
Let's just, I, um, I really would like, like, a month to, to digest this a little more, honestly, and to talk to people and look at things a little bit more.
So, in the interim, are we painting fifty, fifty feet back from the corners? Is that what we're doing in the interim?
It's, it's just hard because this is really, you know, I, there has been engagement and I know the staff has been doing engagement. And it, it's just hard when this is like, you know, this week was the first time we're, we are seeing a lot of these proposed things and then we haven't had our chance to go out and talk to, you know, these folks and see really firsthand what these decisions look like. And it's not to, like, negate the work that anybody has done because the outreach is great and this information that we have gotten is awesome. It's just for me to create the whole picture in my mind, a little extra time just to go over these plans and look at other options and talk to folks in the neighborhood would be, would be helpful.
I, yeah, I agree.
I concur.
So, we're, are we voting on fifty feet? I just, I just want to understand before I leave.
We're going to bring it back.
The whole thing?
The whole thing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. But in the meantime, please reach out to us. We definitely want to talk to you and other business people. I'd like to kind of see for myself, so, thank you. All right. And so, that brings us to oral and written communications. Anybody? Oh, hey, Stace. Leave you out of this part. A, respond to statements. I'm sorry. Everybody's heard that a lot. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom or press nine if you're on the phone.
Hi. My name's Joanne McGary and I just want you to see how wonderful this blue earth flag looks next to me while I'm talking about things like climate change and the regional climate action plan, which I guess you're all aware, there's a public review occurring right now on the whole region. Greenhouse gas emissions, what we've been talking a lot about and cars and traffic, is the number one thing about this climate action plan, reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I'd love for the city of Arcata, whose voters wanted to see this flag more prominent. If we can't do it where we wanted it, let's do it in other places. There's no law against it. Okay, that's that. Buses, buses, I'm taking the bus all the time now. And I'm learning a lot of the drawbacks and the advantages of bus travel for the future, lowering greenhouse gas emissions, reducing the number of cars. There's so many things I could talk about, but I don't have enough time. But the final thing I want to do, and I really appreciate Mayor Matthews representing our community and interacting with other elected officials back in Chicago for the Democratic National Convention. Hopefully, she experienced a lot, both inside and outside the convention hall. We, back in March sixth, created, finally, after much discussion, much angst and turmoil and dialogue, a ceasefire resolution from the city of Arcata that subsequently was taken by the County of Humboldt and the City of Eureka and passed, just putting their name in instead of ours. It was a good thing for our community. I think a lot of people really felt that it's important that we speak out on this issue because we do need to be concerned about what's happening in the world. Climate change, for one. So, I'm asking this council for the third time in a row to really strongly consider adding to this resolution what many of us spoke up about in stopping the United States of America from funding and arming the state of Israel currently in this conflict. Three point five billion dollars went and then the next day, one of our bombs split apart a bunch of children in school. I think it would be really nice to have that added into the thing. And I have other things to say. Read an email I'm going to be sending to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Is there anybody else that would like to make public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom?
No, there's nobody on Zoom who wishes to comment.
No, nobody on Zoom? All right. So, that's confirmed that we have a study session with the Planning Commission Wednesday, October thirtieth. That, that's, I feel like it's super confirmed.
I think we've confirmed it on numerous meetings.
And I'd like to thank City Manager Perry, ooh, that sounds weird to say that, but here we are. I'd like to thank you for coming up with a really great solution for our October second meeting. October second is the first night of Rosh Hashanah, which is one of the Jewish High Holidays, one of the most important holidays. And as you know, like, the last three years, we've had council meetings on Yom Kippur, which is not cool, but I really appreciate your solution. Do you want to talk about it?
Yeah. And our solution was really just to keep it a light meeting in an effort to get the meeting done quickly. So, we'll have ceremonial, a couple of ceremonial items, and we'll have a consent calendar. And then we'll have one public hearing for the CDBG project applications. The award, the two consent items will be award or bid for construction contracts, which are required to be timely. And then the last one is the hearing is also very important for community development to be able to have that public hearing so they can pursue the grant applications for the CDBG program. So, in talking with Mayor Matthews, I think we can get those done in a timely manner before the time...
The holidays start at sundown, so as long as we're done by sundown, I'm good. So, I really appreciate that. That was a good solution.
Well, and then the third Wednesday of October, I will be at the Cal Cities Conference, so...
Is anybody else going to Cal Cities? Nope. So, we'll have a quorum. Okay. Good for you. Business as usual.
That's correct.
Well, then, I adjourn.